Roll call.
Gray. Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Mr. President.
Here, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for remarks by Councilmember Pauls.
My Pledge of Allegiance is expired by the United States of America and through the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You know, in this hustle and bustle life that we live, if you remember the old adage, sometimes you need to stop and count your blessings. So I suggest that we start counting them. Thank you.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder in the East and Wall legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to this meeting of the Omaha City Council. We thank you for joining us here today. As a courtesy to those in attendance and to facilitate the conduct of this people's business, we ask that you turn off or silence any cell phones or other electronic devices. Madam Clerk.
Item six, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Gold Meadows located northwest of 50th and Bancroft Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Bees Communication in opposition.
Public hearing on item six begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon. Mark Westergaard with E&amp;A Consulting Group, 10909 Mill Valley Road. And Mr. Mark Lampy, the developer, is also here with me today. We didn't have any testimony at the planning commission. We agree with all the conditions. This is a nice 15-lot, 16-lot infill project on 50th and Gold. So happy to answer any questions, but we request your approval.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Vice President Palermo, what's your pleasure?
I approve.
Second, roll call.
Gray. Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item six is approved, seven to zero. Item seven, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Marvley with a waiver of Section 53-84D Lot Frontage located northeast of 132nd and Fort Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing on item seven begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes, Mark Klinker appearing as a proponent. This is a small subdivision. It'll end up being three lots. It's been thoroughly vetted by the planning department and I'd ask for your approval.
Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gray. Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item seven is approved, seven to zero. Item eight, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Hanscom Place, Replat 16, located at 1719 Park Avenue. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing on item eight begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Second, roll call.
Gray. Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item eight is approved, seven to zero. Item nine, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Harvey Industrial Park, Replat 1, with a waiver of Section 53-84D Lot Frontage located at 4420 South 67th Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on item nine begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
My name is Kyle Hazy with E&amp;A Consulting Group, 10909 Mill Valley Road, Suite 100. Representing the applicant requesting the replat of Harvey Industrial Park. Make myself available for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gray. Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item nine is approved, seven to zero. Items 10 to 12 relate to the same project and can be considered together for Wounded Warriors Family Support, Dunham Edition, located northwest of 120th Street and Rainwood Road. Item 10, an ordinance to approve an amendment to the future land use element of the master plan to change the future land use map from industrial to low-density residential. Item 11, a resolution to approve a waiver to the present development zone specifications of the urban development element of the master plan for this property. Item 12, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Wounded Warriors Family Support, Dunham Edition.
The public hearing on items 10 through 12 begin at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes, my name is Adam Charleston, 13330 California Street, from Hush Blackwell on behalf of the applicant. With me I have Colonel John Folsom from Wounded Warriors Family Support and Robert Haley from HDR. Anyone here on the project team is happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Mr. Folsom, you want a minute just to talk about this great project?
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate the consideration. I know that Amy and I have exchanged emails. I think your daughter was at Saint Robert Bellamy, is that right? And got a, you know, when we first started this thing, we got, the kids at the school were very enthusiastic, wrote a letter, raised some money for us. And this will, I think, in many respects, be a jewel in the crown for Omaha for what we're proposing to do. And I think every one of you has received something about what we're doing. But I appreciate your support and I'm confident that once we get going, we're going to do some really wonderful things for combat wounded.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Councilmember Harding.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just, I too wanted to express my thanks for all the hard work that Colonel Folsom and Hal and the rest of the development team had put into this. I think it's a, it's a, it's a great project and something that our vets truly deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Melton.
Yeah, and I just want to thank Colonel Folsom for all his work and Hal Dobbs as well for all the work that you've put into this. And I just want to say it, it also, working with the schools, I just want to tell everyone how excited the kids actually got when they get to help with the veterans and with bringing them into it and showing them what we're doing. I think that's key. You know, educating, educating our youth, that's what people have done and people who have sacrificed for them. I think that's really important. And by the way, I found out about this project from my son, not from the people that I normally see. And I just thought it was absolutely great because the kids were so excited about it. And I just want to thank you for all your work and it's definitely something that's needed in this community and I'm glad that we're doing it here in Omaha. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Pauls.
Mr. President, of course we need to say yes to this. And I suggest that a number of you, if you've not been to a VFW recently, you should go because they do need your help also. Because you sit and talk to some of these gentlemen, there are some women there, but most of these are gentlemen. And you can see the effects of their past life has on them right now. So like I say, we have a number of VFWs throughout the city and I think it would be great just to attend. All it is, you sign in or have, be a guest and you can be my guest if you so chose, write my name down. Thank you.
Was that a motion? Roll call.
Gray. Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 10 through 12 are approved, seven to zero. Items 13 to 16 relate to the same project and can be considered together for Indian Creek Reserve located southwest of 192nd Street and Camden Avenue. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 13, an ordinance to rezone this property from AG District, R1 District, and R4 District to R4 District. Item 14, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Indian Creek Reserve. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend denial of a waiver of Section 53-99 Sidewalks. Item 15, a resolution to approve the final plat for Indian Creek Reserve. Item 16, a resolution to approve the subdivision for Indian Creek Reserve.
The public hearing on items 13 through 16 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes. Mr. President, members of the council, my name is John Fulenkamp. My address is 11440 West Center Road. I'm actually here on behalf of SID 404, which is the Indian Creek subdivision, the Villa Townhome Association and these lovely neighbors here right behind me who are in support of this project. This property is, as shown on this map, it's west of 192nd Street and east of a street called 192nd Avenue Circle. It's a 12.6 acre property which we zoned into 40 R4 lots for Villa Townhomes. That's very much in keeping with the neighborhood and the size, scope, and quality thereof. We are here to endorse that project, but also to ask you to approve the sidewalk waiver as it will be proposed in the documents that will do that. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Visual votes on these, right?
That's correct.
I'll move to approve item 13.
Roll call.
Gray. Harding.
Yes.
Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 13 is approved, seven to zero.
Poll to approve the preliminary plat with a waiver of Section 55-99 Sidewalks.
There's a light. Mr. Councilmember Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. I support that motion as well and just would note that I wouldn't typically support waiving a sidewalk that's required in developments these days throughout the city. But I think in this case it is unusual and does merit that consideration. Quite early on, I talked with some neighbors and I know Planning and Public Works made an effort to address the situation, which is a cul-de-sac that doesn't otherwise connect to anything else and is the backyard of an existing development that does not otherwise have access to that street or wouldn't access that street given the elevations. And there is a sidewalk on the other side of the street that makes this, I think, a unique case. So that's why I think it does merit waiving the sidewalk requirement in this case, even though they tried to address it by doing a curb walk to save some trees. It doesn't save all the trees, so I think by doing this motion today, I think is a good way to get that resolved and keep as much landscaping there as possible for the existing neighborhood. And with that, I'll support the resolution. Thank you.
I would just add, to do this, you'd have to, there'd be a pretty fair amount of deforestation included and putting in a lot of concrete that's never going to be used, I think, would be a waste and environmentally unwise and contribute to runoff. Madam Clerk, there's a motion, a second, on item 14.
Gray. Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Roll call.
Gray. Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 15 is approved, seven to zero.
Subdivision agreement that includes necessary changes for the waiver of Section 53-99 Sidewalks.
Roll call.
Gray. Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Thank you very much.
Item 17, an application to consider a Class C liquor license for Austin Steak and Saloon located at 16920 Wright Plaza, number 118.
The public hearing on item 17 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes. Heath Menard, 10304 Spiglast Drive.
Dave Mizik, 15006 Chapel Point Circle.
We're here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gray. Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 17 is approved, seven to zero. Item 18, an application to consider a Class CK liquor license for Salt Grass Steakhouse located at 301 North 175th Plaza.
The public hearing on item 18 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes. Ryan Ricky on behalf of the applicant, Salt Grass Omaha, which will be doing business at Salt Grass Steakhouse. I'm here joined with the current designated liquor license manager, Jim Freeman. We're here for any questions if you guys have any.
Thank you. What is your address, Mr. Ricky?
It is 301 North 175th Plaza. So right there by the mall.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gray. Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 18 is approved, seven to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda and the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The public hearings on agenda items 19 through 32 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone and indicate the agenda item number you wish to address. Identify yourself by your name, your address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or opponent. Public hearing is closed. Councilmember Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President.
Festerson. I think that Madam Clerk has said there were some people who wanted to speak on one of the items. They just were. Without objection. So ordered.
Thank you. Rose, take your time. There are a couple of things I want to say first before you. This is in regards to item 30 on our agenda. It is a commemorative street name change for the Rose Beasley. She has several of her family members here and some of her friends and one of, her son is one of our fine former police officers. Let me just say this. A lot of times, you know, in the media, you will hear, you know, city council members and other folks who are taking care of business in the city. But LaRose, you're one of those people that very quietly has changed the condition of a lot of people in North Omaha and a lot of people in Omaha. She's done hair for, I won't even say how many years. We're going to keep that quiet. But she has done a really outstanding job with LaRosa's Beauty Academy, which used to be on 24th and Lake Street. And one of her, one of her partners in crime is Linda Robinson there. And I'm going to call Linda Robinson out for a minute because when Freddie and I got, when Freddie, my wife and I got married, she had to do my daughter's hairs, my wife's hair. And Linda did a really great job doing that, but she trained and worked with LaRosa Beauty Academy. So I just wanted to take the opportunity to say thank you for years of making a difference in our community, that quiet, the quiet type of person that makes significant change in Omaha that we don't often read about or hear about. But you are one of those people and I just wanted to say my thanks to you. And any comments you want to make, more than welcome to hear.
I'd just like to thank all of you for even considering me. The school was my life. And just like I said, I'm not going to tell you how many years I've been in the business, but I love the students. I was so pleased to see them go out and become successful people. And so many of them have. I've got students here with me today. They've been calling me long distance and it's just a pleasure. I just am so glad. I said, before I close my eyes, I want to see that sign before I close my eyes. But I would like to thank you again and thank you for your kind words. And that's all. I had a whole book I was going to read to you about LaRose Academy, but I'm not going to do that.
I was going to say Monica and Ronnie might do that for you.
I, you'd be here all day. I can't say enough about the school. And I was even the head of the Job Corps Cosmetology Department. So that was a great thing for me and I've been so blessed. And these, and this is one of my students here came, I've had knee surgery, so she wanted to make sure I got up here. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, LaRose. And may we have your address for the record?
2929 Mormon Street, Apartment 6.
Thank you. Councilmember Festerson, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. I'll, of course, support that street renaming as well and thank you all for coming down and sharing your story with us. I also want to engage just number 24 a little bit with Mr. Stube, which I also support, but it's a major street project that I just thought we should touch upon. A $7.2 million project that replaces a badly needed concrete replacement on Crown Point Avenue from about 74th to Blair High Road in front of Northwest High School. So what we have before us is the construction contract, which is the low bidder. And it does represent one of our first major complete street efforts throughout the city as well. Four lanes to three, a trail that will connect to the Keystone Trail up to Lake Cunningham in the following year that we adopted just a few weeks ago. And then also some roundabouts and new traffic controls. So Mr. Stube could just confirm those things, that they are included in this bid and then give the approximate timeframe. Should this be approved today?
Bob Stube, Public Works.
I've got Todd Fitzher and Mike Cloughner here that can potentially address questions with regard to timing and the project itself.
Great, thank you.
Todd Fitzher, Public Works. I'll start with just a quick overview and touch on the complete streets. We had several public meetings in the name of complete streets and we really put some concepts out there and provided questionnaires to the residents that attended those meetings and asked for their input. And then that input actually factored in the final design that you have before you today. And changes were made as a result of gaining that input and some of the things that you talked about, it's not just a street for cars, which arguably today it maybe is, but in the future, it's more of a street for all modes of transportation. Certainly improvements for pedestrians and access to the school and safety and things like that with regard to schedule and timing and all that. I'm going to let Mike Cloughner take over and walk through that for you.
Mike Cloughner, Public Works. The project's scheduled to start approximately mid-October and then open to traffic early part of November. That all depends on weather and things along those lines. We most likely will end up doing some finishing touches in the spring of 2021, but it'll be open to traffic in 2020.
So starting yet this year?
No, no, spring.
Okay, spring, yeah. So all in 2020, the construction season, and you say completed by October or November?
November, November. It'll be open to traffic in November and then we'll probably still have some cleanup items to do in the spring of 2021.
Okay. And obviously we're coordinating with all the businesses along there, Northwest High School as well for what would be during the school year, right?
Yes. During the design, there was a lot of coordination with the entities surrounding regarding the phasing of the project and things along those lines. And then when we do go into prior to construction, we'll ensure that, that we coordinate with those businesses and the residents because there are several residents that have driveways along that corridor.
Right. And I attended several neighborhood meetings that I know you've already had and you had several there. There'd be at least one more prior to construction starting, right?
Yes, we'll at least have one more public meeting. It'll be basically the pre-construction public meeting we typically do. We'll have the contractor there and everything else.
Thank you. With that, I'd motion to approve items 19 through 32.
Thank you. Before we do, former mayor Dobbs recognized on item 30. And we have another light to.
Hal Dobbs, 314 North 97th Court. I'm speaking of this wonderful family and the great contribution that they've made to our city. And I got a phone call and I got surprised, where'd the place have? You called me and said, this is going to be a great day for our family. And so I wanted to be here just to add my support to your consideration for this naming and appreciate that it adds a significant amount of history that now shall be recorded for others to recognize. Mr. President, thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Pauls.
Mr. President, I would like to speak to 28. This is a resolution dealing with awarding $591,000 to Offer Benish Company. It's an amendment to a resolution we had passed in April for $924,000. I would just like to have, is Bob, could you speak to, help me out on this?
Bob Stube, Public Works.
Okay. This is a question I have because needless to say, I have a number of breakfast groups and are always talking about who is in charge. And as I read through this, we are hiring this company in basically in five areas. And I don't want to read all five areas, I'll just throw out like project management. What is their role in project management? Just a general role.
Yeah, so typically we would use outside services related to actual construction activities. And so project management from, from this perspective would be making sure that the contractor is following through with regard to all the different locations. And obviously this is related to reservicing. So there's a lot of work associated to the multiple reservicing projects that we do throughout the city of Omaha.
Okay, then they talk about construction observation. What is, what is that?
So, so again, construction observation comes down to the fact that when we put out a set of contract documents, there are a set of specifications. And so the, we utilize outside services to make sure that the contractor is following through.
Okay, then number three, it says the material testing.
Yeah, so we use asphalt, there's a tack material down, all of that comes down to actually having those, those firms that are specialized to test those materials.
Okay, then the next one, it says consultation and other support services. What would that involve basically?
Oh, it could come down to making a determination because a lot of times we might have some base that needs to be repaired. And so that we would utilize those consultants to assist us in that also.
Okay. So I'm just going to refer back now to the material testing. As I read through it, there are a number of things that they test. I'm curious, on these projects, we have a business who does the testing. I mean, I know they probably have somebody else do it, but is that that role to test like the pavement, the depth or the, of the pavement in material?
Yeah, so there's, there's firms here in town that actually have individuals and equipment to do those types of tests for us. And that's part of the reason why we use those outside consultants to assist us in that.
Okay. And I'm not questioning any of this. So many times when I'm discussing with some of my colleagues when we have breakfast, they're always talking about, well, the streets, the city and the streets. I said, well, the majority of the streets are not by the city. We hire businesses to come in and do the street work. Now you're telling me we also have business, a business who checks on to see whether the businesses are performing what they said they would do. Is that, would that, could I say that?
Yeah, so, so again, we hear comments from the public with regard to you're not doing enough to make sure that the, the material that's being installed is a quality material. And so we will utilize outside services to assist us in making sure that the product, the end product essentially meets what the city specifications are.
And I thank you. The point I'm telling for those friends of mine who are watching, our role is to get it done, but we hire businesses to help get the work done. And then we do actually hire business to check to see if it's done. We're not just sitting there on our heels. And so many times I've been said, well, the other roads, but you guys never check on them. Well, it's not just the city is doing the checking, we are hiring other professionals to help us. And I'm just trying to, to help some of my friends who, who question me on that issue all the time. And I appreciate your answers, Bob. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Pauls. Vice President Palermo.
Thank you, Mr. President. And item number 32, Dr. Donna Polk, would you like to come down and speak briefly on this wonderful project in District 4?
Donna Polk, 3526 North 104th Avenue. Thank you very much, Councilwoman Palermo. Regarding this item 32, it addresses the amount
Regarding this item 32, it addresses the amount of $75,000 that will be used to cover the cost of a program we're calling Ready to Rent. Some of you may be aware of the fact that we have a project in South Omaha at 23rd and N Street that involves 44 affordable housing units and eventually the renovation of the old Eagles Building. And in order to prepare potential tenants to occupy Eagle Heights Apartments, we are offering them the opportunity to complete a Ready to Rent program that has been HUD approved and it will help potential renters understand what it takes to be a good renter. We have found through researching affordable housing projects across the country that a lot of them are started in good faith, but a lot of the tenants really don't understand what it takes in terms of having acceptable credit ratings, how to fill out the lease application. In meeting with our renter, rental manager, they handed me a 27-page lease agreement. And I thought to myself, I didn't fill out that many pages when I bought my duplex. So I wanted to make sure that families and individuals who are eligible to apply because it is affordable housing, that they understand what it takes. So, the city has offered to contribute $75,000 to cover the cost of that project.
Thank you, Donna. Did you figure out the other part of the funding?
Yes, I did.
I'm glad.
And that will be on a later council agenda.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
19 through 32 are approved, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item 33, an ordinance to approve a major amendment to a mixed-use district development agreement for Altec Business Park located northwest of 144th and F Streets. To add language that limits the amendment only to Lot 1, Altec Business Park, Replat 11, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing on item 33 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Mr. President, councilmembers, my name is Jessica Thomas. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, 10250 Regency Circle. I'm here to answer any questions you may have in regards to this amendment.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 34, an ordinance to approve an agreement with Soil Dynamics Composting Farm for regular tree grinding and disposal of tree debris to assist the public in post-storm event cleanup efforts.
The public hearing on item 34 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 35, an ordinance to approve an agreement with Dr. Galen Armstrong in the amount of $150,000 and authorize funding for such agreement from the City of Omaha's Fiscal Year 2018 Justice and Mental Health Collaboration Program grant to provide funding for research evaluation as part of the Heartland Crisis Intervention Team project.
The public hearing on item 35 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska. I'm basically opposed to it because I think we ought, citizens ought to be able to know, does this cover all the costs? Yes, it's a grant, but what about other costs that might be coming out of city budget that alternatively affects our pocketbook? That could be talked about when you print out these agendas, I guess. So I'd like to request that you do that. I know you can't answer back and forth, but we kind of wonder if there is an additional cost beyond the $150,000 of it. Grant by the federal government, I guess, but it does cost us in terms of manpower and the man-hours and various other things, if not actual cash. Thank you.
Are there any other opponents? Councilmember Harding. Public hearing is closed.
Just for the record, there is, all that backup information is available and easily accessible. It's the backup material. You just click on the little blue hyperlink associated with the ordinance and it gives all the funding information that one would need to know.
Councilmember Melton.
Also, hard copies are available in our city council office right when you walk in the door for anyone that doesn't have access to a computer.
Thank you.